Let the record show that a quorum was present and notice of this meeting was legally posted and calls for Texas Open Meeting Act. Please remember that items do not be taken on all the shown on agenda and please join us in turning your cell phones to silent. The board will now conduct an executive closed session to discuss items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meeting Act as allowed by Texas Government Code sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting would take place in a closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take in reserve discussions in closed sessions will take place after board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:01. Thank you, Board.
...
I'll be convening an open session at 6:00 PM. Mrs. Weebo, Fredonia Elementary School President will be given the invocation tonight and the introduction of students to lead our places. Ms. Weebo?
Good evening, President Neal, board members and interim Superintendent Fraley. It is my pleasure for tonight to represent Fredonia and to also do it in a way that we are celebrating our school board members and being able to show you our gratitude for what you do. At this time, if we will bow our heads with the invitation.
So Lord, thank you for giving us this moment to just stop and pause and to be appreciative of what you provide for us and what you provide for our community. It is such a blessing for the weather that you bring and the things to make this school. And as we begin this new semester, please be with the peace and the fortitude to make good decisions for our students as we continue to nourish them, water them, and feed them as they develop into students for our future. Attending to support our board members in their make wise decisions and research and do the right things for us as a community and as a school district. We bring this to you tonight in order to keep you as our focus and our students as our focus also.
Alright, students, if you'll come to the front and line up right in front and you're gonna face the board members. This is, Ms. Garcia is our GT Coordinator at Fredonia, but we added some others this year. We've pulled in our Blue Bonnet Club members. So we're gonna entice you to get ready for Blue Bonnet at the end of the year and to be able to do so. They've been reading their Blue Bonnet books. And then we've also just recruited. So other siblings wanted to join us and so we've kind of grown. And so we're going to let them kind of introduce themselves and then we'll say the pledges. Okay, students, I'm gonna come to you with the mic, okay? I want you to say your name and what grade.
My name is Bella Garcia and I am in third grade.
My name is Berenice Mendoza and I'm in third grade.
My name is Aubrey Ferris and I'm in second grade.
My name is Benjamin Serna V. Wava and I'm in first grade.
My name is Lauren Serna and I'm in second grade.
My name is Lillian Nicholas and I am in fourth grade.
My name is Ariana and I'm in second grade.
My name is Lexi Stilly and I am in the third grade.
My name is Erin Ferris and I am in fourth grade.
My name is Alyssa Ferris and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Edgar Reyes and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Dani Ariaga and I'm in fourth grade.
If you will all stand for our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it should stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice to all. To the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to this flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, we're gonna turn around. Do y'all wanna picture Kristen?
Ms. Weebo, we wanna thank you and your students for coming. As a matter of fact, parents of these students, will y'all please stand? We wanna thank you all for taking the time, for getting them here, and thank you all for all you do and your support. Thank you. Ms. Weebo, while the kids are standing there, the board's gonna come down with the superintendent. We wanna join in the picture. Board members, let's take a picture upstairs. We wanna be a part of this. That brings us to our celebration information items. Ms. Limbargalas will begin with the recognition portion of our meeting.
Good evening, President Neal, board members, interim Superintendent Fraley. We learned last month NACADOCUSIS ISD is one of 250 school districts in the US and Canada being honored by the College Board on the 10th Annual Advanced Placement District Honor Roll. While I'm doing this, I'd like to ask Dr. Ram Crespo and Linda Autry to be making their way up here. Dr. Crespo, as you know, is Principal at NACADOCUSIS High School. Ms. Autry is Director of Advanced Academics for the District. NISD earned its place on the honor roll this year by increasing the number of students since 2017 participating in AP courses while also increasing or maintaining the percentage of students earning scores of three or higher on the AP exam. In other words, more students took the test and more of them scored at least a three, which is challenging to say the least, and that's pretty impressive. It's also the second time NISD has been named to the AP District Honor Roll. This is quite an honor, and I'd like to include the AP teachers from the high school that are able to be here tonight. So teachers, when I call your name, please join us at the front. Betsy Tucker, Kristin Thomas, Darius Tubbs, Don Pierce, Elise Williams, Dr. Igor Gusjakoff, Amanda Heron, Nolan Alders, Penny Long, Jody Franks, Jason Ray, Alex Bryant, Amy Chisholm, Sheila Cavan, Chrissy Wagers, Tori Hobbert, and Jared McNeely. And obviously, some of them couldn't make it to the board meeting tonight, but thank you all very much for being here. Congratulations on this honor, and we just wanted to bring these people before the board tonight to let you guys recognize them as well. Thank you all, and if you would step over here where you saw those students standing a while ago, Ms. Morris is gonna get a picture of you all here as well.
As you all, staff, Dr. Crespo and staff, thank you all, teachers. As you're coming, we have some comments from the board we'd like to make. Will y'all just take a few minutes and, Ms. Mottori?
Yes, I would just like to say that I am very honored to be on this board, to have such caliber of teachers and administrators. You guys have done a great job and look forward to working with you many more, many more months.
Anyone else?
Yeah, first of all, as a parent, I thank you guys for taking care of my kids as they went through your programs. And so, I mean, you're so invaluable to me and all that you've done, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate what you've done for our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and I'm especially happy to see Ms. Tucker. She taught all the lines. Awesome job. Thank y'all so much.
And to my right?
Excellence. You demand it and you perform it yourselves. We thank you for your model and your results.
I also work with some of you, Ms. Tucker especially, and I know how dedicated you are and how wonderful a job you all do. And thank you all very much, Ms. Wright as well.
You know, I'm constantly amazed at what each of you guys do every single day because it's more than a job, it's a passion, and you have to pour your heart into it. And I'm in awe, I'm in awe that you can do that every single day. And those kids know they can count on you and that you're always there. Thank you for that.
I'd like to say, Ms. Betsy Tucker and I go way back. You used to drop your kids off at school, man, we're gay. Been a couple of years ago, hasn't it? I'd like to say to Dr. Crespo, to Ms. Autry, and Dr. Igor, and the staff, thank you all for all you do for our students. Your great work, we really appreciate the commitment you made to the program, AP classes, and thank you for your work. We appreciate it, and certainly, we'll see it in our students. Thank you all. Now the picture.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
NACADOCUSIS ISD has joined 1,025 other school districts throughout Texas to celebrate January as School Board Recognition Month, and you may have noticed some of the decorations around that have come from our campuses. Serving as a link between the community and classroom, school board members are elected to establish the policies that provide the framework for public schools. NISD trustees are responsible for an annual budget of $72 million, more than 6,000 students, 1,000 employees, and 10 campuses. First, let me introduce Chief Sandra Murray for a special presentation from the NISD Police Department. Chief Murray?
President Neal, board members. Four years ago, well, February 1st will be four years ago, I was appointed chief. And may I tell you that in the interim, I have wondered, what was I thinking? It has been an experience, and I appreciate each of you for supporting my vision. You have strengthened our numbers, we have state-of-the-art equipment, so many things you've erased that I don't have to stay up worrying about at night, and I appreciate it. So please accept this as a small token of our appreciation.
Chief, thank you very much.
Let me get to you.
Thank y'all so much.
Oh, that's beautiful.
That's gorgeous.
Don't leave us out of this anymore. Thank y'all so much.
That's what it looks like.
Chief Murray, we just wanted to say thank you so much and to all your officers, all of what you do on the databases, making sure our students are safe and our staff in a safe environment. We appreciate your commitment and we appreciate you all. Any other comments?
Yes, I just want, I just wanna say that I've worked with a lot of you on the police force, but I also have seen the kind of work that you do with our kids, and, and some of you have gone out on home visits with me when I was working for the district. And you guys have a great amount of respect from our kids, and I see that when I see you all in the schools. So thanks for the hard work that you guys do.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Chief. Now, the rocket-based theme for this year's board recognition is launching the next generation. And you will notice the student creations from all campuses can be found in the boardroom tonight. And, you know, I'm tempted to ask you all to put the helmets on because I've got Ms. Morris here who can take a picture.
It'll mess up my hair, Lance. It could mess up my hair. I don't wanna...
Might mess up my hair here.
What about that? What about that? Come on, keep it on.
Blast off, monkey.
I'm going to the moon.
Keep this off YouTube, all right?
Thank you.
Well, honestly, I didn't think you would do it, so... But be sure to take a look at some of these creations. I want to point out a couple of them. Obviously, the helmets, those are from Nettie Marshall. Dr. Crespo asked that I mention that the small rocket by Ms. Anderson is from the CTE Department at the high school, and that was, they used a 3D printer to print that. They designed it and printed it. And he also claims we could put a motor in it and shoot it off, too. I don't know about that part.
Let's try that.
I know, exactly. But one other one I want to point out, and it's the larger rocket there from Mike Moses Middle School. In the nose cone, you can take that off, you will find slips of paper where students have written their dreams of what they want to do and what they want to be after finishing school. And they're really remarkable to read, and some of them are probably close to what I would have written as an eighth grader, which thankfully, nobody saved for posterity's sake. But there's others that are really remarkable. Someone wants to be an agronomist engineer, and I think I mispronounced that, but that's an expert in the field of soil management and crop production. That's what she wants to be as an eighth grader. And many of them talked about something Mr. Fraley has mentioned several times, and that is about what they want their lives to look like when they're 25, when they're 30. It's remarkable thinking for, you know, for what we see as a sixth, seventh, and eighth grader, but it's also a reminder of what's at stake with our children in these public Tonight, we want to recognize the board and the role you play in this. And allow me to introduce all of you, even though we're quite familiar with you, but Board President GW Neal, Board Vice President James Montoya, Secretary Dr. Tyrell Gromon, Pam Fitch, Fashi Niramand, Mindy Winslow, and the Reverend James Irvin. Board, thank you for the vital work you do and the roles you fill in our community.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I appreciate the recognition, but I think I savored the honor and the opportunity to serve as a board member, because I've worked with many of you from the school district, and I know how dedicated you are and what you want, the best for our students, and I think you all know that's what I want, the best for our students and an opportunity to get a great education if they can. But thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Neal, pardon me?
Yes, sir.
I plan on just being the last board I work with in this capacity, and I just want to say how much it's been a joy to get to know most of you and to work with you and to understand your passion and your sincere concern for our community, for our students. We've had lots of conversations one-on-one and lots of conversations back in the back room there about things, and I can say that we truly have folks who care, who care, and we've taken some big risks together. You've trusted me in a lot of ways and on a very short period of time, and I do believe that we have taken some steps in the right direction that can really help propel this community, or launch the community, to higher heights, and we can just kind of, we can keep it going, just keep it going. We have a great opportunity here in my hometown, and I just want to thank you for the chance to come back and work and serve here and for your accepting some of my ideas and for the courage you've shown in saying yes to a lot of things. So, thank you, and congratulations, very well deserved.
Thank you. Thank you. Les, do you have a picture? Do you need a picture of this group? Because they're all hams, they're...
We did the helmet, John.
Oh, we did the helmet. My hair is messed up now, Les.
There is no superintendent report tonight. We are proceed board to public comment. Thank you for interest in Nacogdoches ISD. We have set aside this portion of meeting to receive input from the public. Local policy BED was approved last month, which states all board meetings, public comment should be limited to items on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Each person designed to speak must have already completed and submitted a proper public comment form. In order to hear from as many patrons as possible in line for efficient meeting, each speaker has a maximum time of three minutes. If you have more than 10 speakers, each speaker have a maximum of two minutes. This is a public meeting of the NISD Board of Trustees governed by the Texas Open Meetings Act and not a meeting of the public. Further, this is not the form to initiate or continue a complaint about students and staff. We have established policies and procedures for that. Speakers are reminded, comments in this form must be directly connected to the posted agenda item. Comments will be directed to the Board of Trustees and not to the audience and staff. The board will not engage in or respond to comments other than to seek clarification from the superintendent where necessary. We have two speakers ready to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Mr. Michael Morgan will keep time for us. I will now notify the speaker when time has expired. Our first speaker is Mrs. Michelle Peck.
Good evening, President Neal, Board Members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. First, I'd like to thank the board for your service, not just this January Board Member Recognition Month, but throughout the year. I've attended district board meetings for more than 10 years, and it's really encouraging to see how each of you is working together. You know, Les mentioned that you're responsible for a budget of $72 million, and I think we need to tell the community time and time again that not one penny of that is allocated to board salaries. You're all donating your time and your talents and your gifts to this community for absolutely nothing but the joy of serving Nacogdoches and the students in this community. We really, really appreciate what you do. Community members like me also get really excited when you demonstrate your diligence, your engagement, and your stewardship. It's been really great to see this board in particular showing up at events. We've seen you in the community, we've seen you in the schools, I've seen you at concerts, I've seen you at plays. It's just remarkable to see you get to know the community and work in the community and see those kids and those teachers up front and close and know what's happening, and I appreciate that specifically. I also want to thank you for your diligence in adopting the public participation policy that President Neal just mentioned. It's really important to promote transparency in our schools, and I'd also like you to consider better informing the public by publishing the supporting documents that you reference throughout our meetings. Each of those documents in the agenda that you reference is board book. Members of the community want to speak and engage in what you're learning about and teaching and the decisions that you're making, and we don't have access to those materials. So, please consider that transparency continuing that on. And speaking of transparency, I again encourage you to impress upon the district Public Information Officer to comply with state and federal laws responding, excuse me, requiring requests, requiring responses to public information requests. I'm still awaiting fulfillment of requests filed last July and last August, including communications between you, the board, and our interim superintendent, Mr. Fraley, between the dates of April 19, 2019, and May 20, 2019. Please, let's not let a year go by before this request is honored. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Ms. Amber Teal.
I first want to thank you all for the hard work and dedication and time that you put into our school system and our children. I know a couple of you attended the city council meeting the other night, and we spoke about trust and building trust in our community. Tonight, I want to just encourage you all, when considering the district support center plans, that you think about how much funds will be allocated for that and making sure that we have enough money to put into our students as we prepare. I know a couple meetings ago, Mr. Fraley mentioned that if we didn't have enough money, then the press box would be the one to go, if I remember that correctly. And we don't want anything that our students are directly impacted by to be left by the wayside, so I just ask that you consider that tonight as you're thinking about the DSC and how the students use it, but not as much as some other things that are on the bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now proceed with public hearing regarding the Texas Academic Performance Report, also known as TAPR, for the 2018-2019 school year. After the presentation, there will be an opportunity to hear comments from the audience. Comments that take time must pertain to the TAPR report. Dr. Hill will give the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Good evening, President Neal, Board Members, and Interim Superintendent Fraley. Thank you very much for your time this evening. It is an annual report that we do, and some of this information is redundant because we've shown it to you through various meetings and/or approvals, so this is just a summation. So, if you'll bear with me, this report, as well as all of its contents, will be posted on our website within two weeks following this presentation, as well as each campus has notebooks, hard copied notebooks, that they will have in their front office for anyone that is wanting to go through the information. And as we know, the TAPR report is published online via the TEA website. So, this particular page that I'm on now, if you're looking at page numbers, it's on So, this just gives us a summary of what we're going to be talking about tonight and the various sections that are covered within this annual report, and we'll begin just going through the taper report, which was released recently. So, Section 1, if you're looking in your board book, I believe it is entitled "Section 1: The Texas Academic Performance Report." If you're looking on page numbers, we're on page 019 for this particular slide, or the actual taper begins on page 026. So, this report is compiled with TEA. It's pulled directly from our PIMS, as well as our student assessment data. This particular report is always a year behind, but it is a good summary of all of our information. It does come in two different forms. One is a PDF version, and the other one is an interactive piece. They call it a comprehensive dynamic online system. On each of these, you have a district report, and then, of course, we have our 10 campus reports. They all look the same in format. The very first page often begins with the name of the campus and/or the district, the accountability letter, grade rating, which our district was a C. All of our campuses met standard with the exception of Fredonia Elementary. It talks about our special education determination status, which for the district is needs intervention. And then, we do have three campuses that received distinction designations this past year based on the state accountability system, those being TJR, McMichael Middle School, as well as Mike Moses. Continuing on with the slides pertaining to the section, which is the specific taper report, as you go through there, you'll begin to see a lot of summaries pertaining to grades three through eight performance regarding STAR. These are for each assessment, all grades, all subjects, and then, you'll also denote the very specific sub-populations that this particular report looks at. As you continue on the lengthy report, it talks about academic growth or progress, the prior year-end student success initiative, which are for grades five and eight, reading and mathematics. And then, they've added a new section a couple of years ago, and this pertains to our bilingual education and English as a second language students and their performance and progress. We continue on with STAR participation, but then it also goes into attendance, graduation, as well as dropout rates, and there is a section pertaining to the graduation profile. You'll also see sections denoted regarding college career military readiness. In these particular sections, you'll also see some AP results, which we've talked about this evening in our recognition or at the high school, SAT and ACT results, and then there are some other post-secondary indicators that are also mentioned. One of the last sections that you'll encounter in the taper regards the student information. This just has student enrollment. It also has very specific information regarding retention rates, average class size information, numbers of students that are participating in special programs. There's also staff information. In this particular section, it talks about the total number of staff, staff by classifications, teachers by ethnicity and gender, staff salary, teacher turnover rate, things of that nature. And then, that last particular section in the taper is the program information, which has, and I'm sorry, I was being redundant, I got ahead of myself, the student enrollment of our program, and then, of course, the teachers that we have dedicated to each program. Continuing on with the report, it leads us into Section 2. This particular slide is on page 019. If you're following along in your board book, it's the Section 2, PIMS Financial Standard Report. This is some financial data that we've seen throughout the year, especially in our most recent first report that we had. We are required to specifically state the unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2018 was $20,592,606, and this represents 38% of the 1718 general fund expenditures. Moving on to Section 3, we are, there are four different designations regarding the district accreditation status, and we are accredited, so that report has been included. I believe it's on page 288, or the Section 3 Accreditation Status. Section 4 pertains to our Campus and District Improvement Plan Performance Objectives. These were approved back in the September 2019. This is something that we do annually at the beginning of the year and seek board approval. Those begin on page 289, with the district report being specifically on page 379. As we move on to Section 5, this particular report contains information on report or violent criminal incidences on campuses. This was for the 2018-19 school year. We did have four incidences during that school year that are reported, and it will break it down a little more specifically for you. If you're looking in your board book, it is entitled "Section 5." If you're looking at the pages, it begins on page 467, if you want to see specifically where those were and exactly what. Section 6 is a report compiled by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. We call it the Student Performance in Post-Secondary Institutions. This shows us the grade point average of students from the graduation year of 2016-17. On this report, you'll also notice that the students that the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board tracked, there are 100 students that attended a four-year public university, there are 102 students who attended a two-year public university, and then, lastly, there are three that attended an independent college or university. And that report also averages their grade point averages, and that particular report is on page 468 of your board book. When we get to Section 7, that is just the glossary of terms that may be unfamiliar that you see in the taper report. It is in both English and Spanish that will be posted to our website. That begins on page 470, or Section 7. And then, lastly, just to reiterate that this information will be posted on our NISD website under About NISD, then there's a section called Required... our NISD website, under About NISD, then there's a section called Required Postings, and then, if you'll go to the annual report, as well as the principals do have hard copies of these documents on their campuses. So thank you very much.
This gives us an opportunity for comments from the audience at this time? Please.
Good evening again, President Neal, board members, and no longer interim Superintendent Fraley. I do have a couple of questions, and I've read the TAPER reports for multiple campuses, and I know those weren't shared today with the public for this public hearing, but I'm assuming the board each has copies of those. Dr. Hill, you spoke about the district's combined standards and said that we met standards as a district. However, did we meet standards, or did we meet the state standard, which is actually just approaching standards as a district? A C, yes. Okay, and I learned at a high school meeting that that actually means that we're approaching state standards, which to me is very different than meeting standards, because that's a separate standard in the accountability rating. I also noticed that you mentioned the Section Five, the Report of Criminal Incidents. Is that published on each campus and online as well? Within two weeks, okay, super. I noticed that the district has not improved from a special education determination status of needs intervention since two thousand sixteen, which we had a little bit of an improvement from needs substantial intervention. And in two thousand fifteen, we had onsite action. In two thousand fourteen, we were noncompliant, and there was a follow-up in two thousand thirteen. What response is required of the district for its continued needs intervention status in special ed?
So we are working with DEA. They have changed from our PBMAS report to something called results-driven accountability, and so there are various indicators that we are working with DEA on. They do pertain to student discipline.
They're only retaining, pertaining to student discipline with respect to special education needing intervention?
Or this year regarding results-driven accountability.
Who is our officer appointed to that?
Our Director of Student Populations or Special Education is Dr. Audrey Young.
And then, who is the district coordinator of school improvement responsible for seeing, overseeing the intervention activities for the targeted improvement plans?
Dr. Jolynn Corley and myself.
Have we published a tip submission calendar?
Excuse me, just comments instead of questions, please.
I'm sorry, these, this is a public hearing. Are we not allowed to ask questions in the agenda? I think it said public questions and comments. President Neal, are we not allowed, according to state law, to question in a public hearing?
Mrs., Dr. Hill is it?
I'm fine with the question, sir. Thank you very much.
Has Nacogdoches ISD published a tip submission calendar?
I'm not sure, but I will get back with you.
Okay, and where will the campus? Has Nacogdoches ISD published a targeted improvement plan submission calendar?
So we worked very diligently at the beginning of the school year. We met all the requirements that were set by DEA. Every campus that was required to undergo the targeted improvement plan went through multiple steps, because it was more than just writing a plan. We had to go through a data analysis on each campus, and there was an actual data reflection tool that was completed in a very timely manner. We were able to get the targeted improvement plans to the board for approval, and then we were able to submit the ones that were required to my sandwich as a secure DEA website. So we're in compliance with our submissions with DEA.
And where are those published for members of the community?
At this moment, they're not, but that's, I mean, it's very well something that could happen.
But we will post them only if they are required to be posted.
According to the DEA campus-level turnaround plan meetings, hearings, announcements are all required to be published. And have those meetings, hearings, and announcements happened for Emeline Carpenter, who earned a D. rating, or Fredonia Elementary, who earned an F. rating this year? And are those published in any way for the community to see?
I do not know.
Okay. I would appreciate that that information gets published. I think law requires that, for the parents especially. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Speaking of Catherine Daniel, as a citizen, not as anything related to my employment or my profession, well, I haven't served as a teacher, so I guess it is related to my profession, but I don't currently work as a teacher. I'm risking being reprimanded by speaking because my members are supposed to speak. I want to make it clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone who is a member of the association I work for. I'm speaking as Catherine Daniel. I'm listening to Michelle, you all can hear me, I'm fine right here. I'm listening to Michelle ask questions and make comments, and I'm hearing people on the back, and then the the audience, like, groaning and moaning as if she's asking for information that's too much or excessive. But think about it, we used to have a real TAPER report where the information that DEA provides and requires you present in a public hearing, that was actually the data was discussed, not an outline of what's in the report. The data. And there's actually really good data in there. There's good data in there. But when you stand up there and just give a presentation about what's in the report, you're not praising them, you're not pointing out your positives, and you're not pointing out where we really need to dig in. And that's all I'm saying. But there are guidelines in DEA about a public hearing. And I'm just sad that you all think that transparency is a bad thing, and then it causes these conflicts between parents and teachers, because there's misunderstandings. We've had a lot of success, and we have a long way to go. If you look at this annual report, thirty percent of teachers turnover rate, and the average for state is sixteen percent. Those are things that we shouldn't necessarily be ashamed of and not feel the blame getting. Talk about.
Thank you.
We work with our teachers to develop programs for their recruiting people to come work here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. I do want to clarify that the presentation that was presented this evening was recommended by Lead Forward Resources. We use Lead Forward to help us drive our accountability and to make data-driven instructions. They're a statewide company. I know a lot of y'all are familiar with them, and I do understand about the actual data that's requested, but this is an example of a notebook, and we have it here, and I'll be happy to meet with anybody that has specific questions. Just want you to know that that's always an option, and that these, these, I mean, this is information that is public information, is all information that's on the DEA website. But we're glad to work with parents and community members. That's why we have organized this on campuses. Office staff knows that these are available upon community or parent request. In addition, it's going to be on our website, and like I said earlier, if you if you would like to set up a time to meet with me to discuss anything in particular or specific, I'm more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
But stop trying to hide things.
Thank you.
And just talk about it.
Thank you. Mrs. Teal?
So I just kind of want to echo what Catherine did say. I've encouraged parents to tune in live because they were going to learn some very important information that they needed to know, and I'm pretty disappointed that they're not going to get that information. As a parent, I, or as a more informed parent, I would say, I looked up some of this information, and there is some data that I want to address, one being retention. Our retention rates within a district, and you know this hits really hard with me, are unbelievable, unbelievable. And when I look at those numbers compared to the state, it's embarrassing. I talk to people from other districts, and they don't have this problem. My question is, what are we doing to prepare our students to be ready for the next grade versus retaining them and risking their future, because that's what's happening with a lot of our kids. In ten years, we'll see an increase in dropout rate, I'm pretty sure. But when we have more than, I believe it was thirty, twenty-five to thirty percent of our kinder first and second graders being retained, I think all those numbers are over five percent. Also, with the special education population, one grade was at nine percent, nine percent of our special ed kids are being retained. What services are we not providing as a district to help those children get on target and be prepared for the next grade? Because to me, retention is not, it's not what's helping all of our kids. Another thing to point out was, and I brought this to all of you all's attention in the email, were the the campus report card for TJR, the classroom numbers. I'm curious to know if you all got an answer, whether those numbers were accurate or if they weren't.
Mrs. Teal, thank you for the comments. If you would work with administration and sit down with me, I'm sure they would further go over everything with you. So thank you.
I would like for my questions to at least be addressed so that the public can hear them, and also, there are people watching on live that would like to know the answer to those also, and I think a private meeting wouldn't. This is supposed to be a public hearing where we're just having a discussion. And if that's not possible, I just wish we could clarify what we're actually having within a meeting with the public before the meeting.
There are a lot of challenges in the district. So I've heard nothing new, I've heard no solutions either, and we've got to work together and get to my solutions, and that's some ongoing work, and we've done some things, specifically regarding each individual campus. I think that as we take this, these data, we will be having some conversations, some tough conversations about all the things you've talked about. I don't have an answer for everything right now tonight, because we're getting the information, we're still going through it, but we had to get this report out in compliance with what's required. But the the report doesn't end the work. There's a lot of work to go on.
Could we at least address the classroom size? Because I know we're required to get waivers for those classroom sizes, and that's really concerning to me as a parent of a child, of children at TJR.
Well, we have gotten waivers for some classes because we have our time, retaining staff is all connected. Retaining staff, having the staff, and having the space, basically is always a challenge, right?
The average, I believe, on the TJR report card was thirty students per class, or the average class for second grade was about thirty students.
I doubt that very seriously.
That was on the report card.
That's got to be the in error.
And I could send that to you if you would like, and I send it to all the board members.
There's got to be an error. I like to see that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board will now move to consent agenda. Unless removed from the consent agenda, all our lists will be acted on with one motion. If there is a board member who wishes to discuss items on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter, it will be set aside for further discussion and separate vote. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Neal, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a second? Well, motion second to approve consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, we please vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The consent agenda passes now, Mr. Caesar. We're now down to our discussion and action agenda. We will now proceed with item on the discussion action portion while rescheduling the February, March, and April board meetings, and we ask Mr. Fraley if he would, at this time.
Yes, sir. President Neal, members of the board, we're asking you to consider new dates for your February, March, and April meetings. The February twenty-fourth, that Monday, being agenda review, starting at ten o'clock a.m. versus noon.
Yes, sir.
And then having the regular meeting that Thursday, February twenty-seventh, at five p.m. And because of spring break, moving the March meeting to March twenty-third, the agenda review at March twenty-third at noon, and the regular meeting, March twenty-sixth at five. And because of the bad weather days and having more time between each meeting, we're asking to move the April meeting, general review, April twentieth at noon, and regular meeting, April twenty-third at five p.m. That's the recommendation.
Board, you've heard the appropriations superintendent in discussion on? Let's have a motion first.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the revised schedule for agenda review and board meetings for months of February, March, and April of two thousand twenty.
We have a second for that motion?
No second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion passed, and the agenda will be changed for the board accommodations. Thank you. We need a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So move that we be adjourned.
We have a second? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned, board, thank you.